Roll call.
Council Barton.
Present.
President, Council Cahill.
Present.
President, Council Capano.
Present.
President, Council Chakoudis.
Present.
President, Council Calucci.
Present.
President, Council Seer.
Present.
President, Council LaPierre.
Here.
President, Council Lozzi.
Present.
President, Council Net.
Present.
President, Council Trahant.
Present.
President, Council Walsh.
Present.
I'll rise for a moment of silence before we start our moment of silence tonight. The council's lost one of its own a few weeks ago. Charlie O'Brien's wife, Janice, passed away. Also, if we can remember, Harry Williams tonight and Sharon McLavania.
Mr. President, also Joe Palmarini, please.
Plenage of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Seven minutes from the May 9 meeting. So wish the council, motion made.
Check it.
Seconded, all those in favor.
Aye.
New business.
New business, we have a discussion of a proposed tax incremental exception agreement regarding the property of 254-272 and 282R Linway, the former Beacon Chevrolet property.
Mr. Caudell, ex-council president, how are you tonight?
Mr. President, thank you very much. The North Harbor site of the Beacon site, we call it the Beacon site because that was the last use of that property. That was over 30 years ago. We've been working with the city council, specifically Council Capano, in the full body. And I think it will be known that this body is the group that put this project through the hoop. When you look back at what the city council did, creating a master waterfront plan, looking at the Linway, saying, "We can do better than what's there." Better than the fast food, the car dealerships, et cetera. So this body passed a plan and a vision of what we wanted on the Linway. And what we wanted is here before us tonight. This council has unanimously supported every aspect of this proposal. I've been working closely with the city assessor who is here tonight, Mr. Karen. The owners are here tonight. They met with the council president on a few occasions recently. And as I said, we've been looking at this vacant lot for 30 years, and we are now right at the precipice of having real development. We're talking about an $80 million project. We're talking about 340 or so residential units. We're talking about the boardwalk that will go from Heritage State Park behind this property all the way to the ferry site, which, glad to report, is back and up and running. The agreement which is before you tonight is a seven-year agreement. It's actually a 10-year agreement. The first three years, though, the owners will pay 100% of the taxes. If you look at the last page, I can sum this up very succinctly. If we continue and look at that vacant parking lot, over the next 30 years, that will produce $3.5 million in taxes. When this project is approved, even with the TIF agreement in place, it will produce over the next 30 years over $46 million in taxes. So it's the first project that has come down the pipe that really is what we wanted. When we said we could do better, this is what we had envisioned. This is, these, the folks that are here behind me, they just finished Revere. They did a beautiful job there. I think the councils are familiar with the principles. They will do exactly what they've told the city that they're going to do. It will be a beautiful project. There's a lot of interest in the waterfront. But to get a bank to finance this, which is a brand-new use, $80 million, I can't tell you the last time that much was invested in the city of Lynn, is a risky loan for a bank. This is critical piece to get this thing financed. In fact, it won't happen unless this gets approved. So with that, Mr. Chairman, I'm hoping that you will look at that schedule that I have submitted to the city council, and I hope that you pass this because it will lead to something that will really change the face of Lynn. And I'm here to answer any questions that you may have.
Council Trahant.
Thank you, Council President. The only question I have is when? When are they breaking ground?
Yeah, that's a good question. So if you see the schedule on the last page, shovel would be in the ground. It would be probably the spring, late winter, spring, but no later than that. They're going through the state permitting, city permits are clear. They're going through the state permitting now, and the financing is the last piece. But you're looking at probably the spring. This is really going to happen. We've been talking and talking and talking, right, Counselor, about the waterfront? This is going to happen.
Now, just another question now, Mr. Caudell. Now, have you been in touch with, like, well, I know probably Council Cahill's new to the State House, but like Tom McGee, has he been involved? Like, can he speed up the state?
Yeah, so we-
Is that possible?
As the, as the lead team that we have, so I'm the chairperson of the lead team, so we meet, the lead team meets monthly. We have city, state, and federal all sitting around the table. You folks passed the accelerated permitting, so that's in place for the state permitting. As quickly and humanly possible, this thing will be permitted. And in fact, it's going very quickly.
So everybody's staying on top of it?
Everybody is working together, move forward, yes.
Thank you, Counsel, I mean, Mr. Caudell, you've done a good job on this. I know it's a long time coming and-
Thank you.
You know, good job.
Council Walsh.
Thank you, Mr. President. Jimmy, I got some questions here.
Sure.
So a couple of things. Why, why are we looking forward to making this happen tonight?
I'm sorry?
I mean, if we don't have all the permitting in place and things from Chapter 91 that's kind of undecided, why are we looking for a tax TIF tonight?
This, well, similar to other projects that the council has passed, Kettle Cuisine, we did a 20-year TIF, and it's the same process. This is the same process that we've always done.
I'm just thinking, with such, you know, I mean, I know there's been some questions about this site and about public access and things that have happened here, and knowing that Chapter 91 has a lot to do with that, and maybe some input coming out of the city about what they want to see down there. I don't know if giving a tax TIF on a piece of property right now without knowing what the benefits out of the city or the people in the city are going to get out of it. I'm just kind of wondering.
Well, what the benefits of the city is when, when, when the city council rezoned that area, this was in mind. When the city council amended the rezoning in that area to do away so that 100% of it would be residential, this is the project we had in mind. As far as public input, there is no public input. This is private property. It's zoned properly. They're building it exactly to the vision that the city council passed. So I, as far as the benefits, that blows me away because this will, this is a game changer, right? We're looking at this site as the first project. We talk a lot about vision and plans, but this one is actually going to happen. So now this one gets done, or shovel goes in the ground, O'Donnell is pulling permits down the other end, South Harbor, the Gare Plant is going through the environmental process now. We're at the, at the beginning of the genesis stage of game-changing development. I mean, these projects, I sat where you sat for 20 years. I never voted on an $80 million project, not once.
My concern, I'll just, I'll voice it here, and we just came from the room in a committee meeting talking about raising trash taxes or trash fees for residents here.
Yep.
And I just don't understand, or maybe I don't get, why we should be giving a builder with prime real estate on the waterfront a tax TIF when we're asking residents around here to be paying more for their trash?
Yep.
I just, that-
Sure.
I don't understand.
And I respect, as you know, I respect you, Counselor. If this thing doesn't get financed, it will be vacant for the next 30 years. It will produce over 30 years, $3.5 million in taxes. If it gets built, which it will get built once it's financed, it will produce over $46 million in taxes. Door number one, door number two. So I think that, and I respect where you're coming from, but I would be going back to my constituents, saying, "My vote tonight is producing $46 million in taxes over the next 30 years."
Right, so we're using, we're going to, you know, give a tax TIF on a piece of private property and still looking for public access and some things that I know have been spoken of, and there's been meetings about those things.
Yes.
And some questions about them because I think the original plan that the council actually approved had been amended. If I remember correctly, there were some parking spaces removed and things. So again, I think the input, even though it's private property here and private investment, if we're going to be using tax dollars or credited tax dollars, I think we need to look at the public access portion of it and what that entails for the people of the city.
The public access is a state law, Chapter 91. That public access would be the boardwalk. Now, that boardwalk would cost $7 million to build.
And five of it will be funded by taxpayer money if it's approved through the tax TIF, right?
No. $7 million, where'd you get that $5 million from?
I think over 30 years, it's about a $5 million tax TIF savings, somewhere around that, is that?
Oh, you're talking about the savings, yes.
Savings, right, so the $5 million that they'll save over that time will be paid.
But, yeah, but as far as public access goes, it's that boardwalk. That's the public access.
I mean, maybe it ain't the point to have, to have that discussion here, but the question is, is about people getting to the access there and providing spaces for people. And I think that's what the issue would be. And I just don't know if we're giving tax money or giving a break on the taxes for the people of the city, whether it's really, makes sense to not have that discussion first about whether we're going to provide more access to it, I guess.
There will, as far as public access goes, Counselor, the public access would be the boardwalk. This is, this is a private 344 residential unit. The only public access would be along the waterfront.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd just like to, I'd like to thank the team of Jim Caudell and the EDIC for continuing to work with some of our larger landowners on the waterfront. None of this stuff is, is easy. We are facing a significant financial issue here in the city of Lynn. But I would just say, if we had this project in front of us just 10 years ago in 2007, which I wish we did, we would just be coming out 10 years later of the incentive that we're offering this developer now, and we'd be reaping the benefits from that. The problem with Lynn is that our growth has been very poor. We, unlike most communities, have a tremendous opportunity for growth, being our waterfront, being other parcels in the city of Lynn, the Lower Washington Street. And these programs have been set up strictly for gateway cities like Lynn. We are always the last to invest in because we're the longest shot, if you would say. And this isn't funny money. This is, this is exceptionally expensive investments by folks. When you start talking about not just a million, $2 million, but $80 million, these are real players. And for them to not bypass Lynn and go to Salem, which they've done forever. She agrees. Strong supporter. We need, unfortunately, we need to participate in these programs. Now, to Jim's credit, if you look at the schedule, and unlike the Market Basket TIF, that was a 20-year TIF, started at zero, ratcheted up to 100, and I would still argue that that project would not be built today had we not done a TIF. It'd be vacant land for another 40 years. This is a much tighter schedule. And to his point, the Chapter 91 requirement, which for folks who don't know what Chapter 91 requirement is, it's access to the waterfront. We want folks in public sector, in the public, to have access to the waterfront. We don't want private developers to come in and cut off access. That's why when you go to Boston, you enjoy a lot of the waterfronts. You see that in Haverhill, you see it in Lawrence, you see it in a lot of communities that are doing this. And Lynn will do the same thing. But that's significant. It's like a $7 to $8 million investment to build a walkway where you're not going to charge rent, you're not going to recoup those costs. So it's a, it's an interesting way for the Commonwealth to incentivize gateway cities to revitalize their, their waterfronts or their undeveloped lands that are historically very difficult to invest in. And banks, banks know the value of land. They're not sitting back saying, "Well, you know, we read in the paper that there's a lead team in Lynn, so let's invest tens of millions of dollars." They want hard facts. And when there is the state to back it up, that's when you get development. So by 2027, this city's going to look completely different. I really, truly believe that. And it's because of the decisions made today in 2017 that's going to change those visions of 10 years. Had we had the opportunity in 2007 to do this, we would have done it, but the market crashed. Here we have an opportunity to finally get some pieces in place to really set us up for future growth and new growth, which is what we desperately need. And we're not giving them anything. We're just not taking away things from them. That's a better way of looking at it. Because they could just have vacant land there, as Jim said, for the next 10 years, 15 years, 20 years, and pay the same property tax that it's always been. I think that the schedule we have before us with what the projected tax for a developed parcel will be is underestimated. I think it's actually going to result in more tax dollars for the city of Lynn. This is a very conservative outlook. So I, to Counsel Walsh's point, I get it. It's tough. Right now, in the moment, we're really leaning on our current tax base, residential tax base, for monies that we need. But if we make these types of investments, it's not going to really impact those residents, but in 10 years, it will in reduced property taxes, in better schooling, and just a lot more free cash around for us to be able to make the investments that we've just have missed, construction year after construction year after construction year. So with that being said, these are the type of things we have to do. The EDIC has been fantastic on that, working with J.A.S., and I will praise Governor Baker, I will praise Seth Moulton, Congressman Moulton, I will praise the delegation, the city council, who put a lot of these pieces in place. You should all take credit for that. But this is what we want. And unfortunately, this is what we have to do to get these development money in. So I'm going to vote in favor of it. I understand the concerns because of current issues, but this should solve a lot of our problems going forward. Thank you, Mr. President.
Council Capano.
Yeah, so I understand and I agree with a lot of what Council Walsh was saying. I think part of the problem is, and I agreed with everything and helped to get us to this point. And I understand what this means for the city, like Counsel Cahill says. I think the problem is, I mean, so we get this like Friday night, didn't know we're going to be voting on this tonight. And, you know, the longer these projects take, and I understand why they take so long, we're dealing with, you know, bureaucracies in the state, the more questions people have. So, 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 you know, communication is, is really key. So one of the things that's come up is this question of access to the waterfront, like the, the group that EDIC, yourself, Jim, and has now doing the walks on the waterfront, it's encouraged people to go down to the waterfront. And one of the things that has come up over the last couple of weeks and brought up, and I remember parts of it, it was a long time ago, is like when Council Walsh says, you know, access to the boardwalk, are the people from Lynn going to have, that live here now going to have access to the boardwalk? Because one of the things that comes up is seaport landing, you know? So there are people, all the time, that are saying, "Well, that Heritage State Park was just put there just to satisfy Chapter 91 requirements. There's no intention of ever using that park. We built a bridge, and people were supposed to be able to park at North Shore Community College and walk across the bridge and use the park." Now, of course, they haven't allowed anyone to park there in many years, so the park remains stagnant. And then, you know, it allows other people to say, "Well, no one uses that park anyways." So, you know, and it just feeds on itself. So what we would like to prevent happening on the waterfront is that sort of thing.
Right.
So if we have a boardwalk there and no one from Lynn has access to that, you know, it's sort of, it's, we're sort of in the same ballpark, you know? So that's, we're not getting anywhere, you know? And that, the question more and more becomes, you know, what about the people that live here now, you know? So-
So Pete, excuse me, Counsel, I think you've been to every meeting, right?
I have.
When you go back, you go back to 2006, when we created the plan.
That's right.
Those 19 public, I think you made all 19, right?
Yep.
But one thing I would say to you, so let's close our eyes for a minute and imagine that this is built, right? So you have that boardwalk that connects Heritage Park down to the ferry site. Counsel, we have 321 parking spaces at the, at the ferry site. There's plenty of parking there. You have my word that it will be parking there. Folks can come from all over the North Shore, not just Lynn, park their cars there. Right from that point, would be able to walk all the way to Seaport with a connecting boardwalk, once this project is done. So I would say, as far as public access, and you know that I fully support that, that this project will ensure that. And as far as getting to that boardwalk, you, you know the parking lot that EDIC owns where the ferry site is, there's plenty of parking there. And that boardwalk will start right there, and it will connect all the way behind this property, all the way to Heritage Park. So for the first time in my lifetime, that area will be, will be accessible. You've never gone down there, other than, you know, doing your job as a ward council going down there. There's nothing there right now.
I understand.
You will have a boardwalk that you, your constituents, and the entire North Shore can utilize.
Yeah, so I just want to ensure that that, you know, is a priority. You know, the, the other thing too is, you know, because this came up at the last minute, I have, you know, workers from companies that have registered apprenticeship programs calling me that have local workers in Lynn. And, you know, they're interested in, you know, when we're going to vote on this. Of course, I told them I didn't think we're voting on this tonight because I didn't know, you know, in, in having work, you know, for their workers, you know, registered apprentice, graduates from registered apprentice schools, you know, with those types of companies. So they're calling me, and they're interested in work too. So having answers to these people and people in the neighborhoods that want access, if you add it all up, you know, we need to have more communication, you know, to, you know, to be able to help this process along, to keep it open and, you know, and not fall off the rails here. I know it took a lot, a long time to get to this point, but I think Counsel Walsh is hearing some of those same things that I've been hearing for-
Yeah, I mean, if I could, I mean, you know-
More and more, the longer this goes on.
Yeah, Mr. President, if I could. So, I mean, you know, I, I agree, Mr. Caudell, I've been down there a long time. My family's been on the waterfront, you know, and, and there's been a lot of things proposed and, and things that come down the pipeline and, you know, and we're watching things and hoping, and it's just like everybody else, you know? I mean, I think we got one shot to do this, right? Correct? And, you know, and if we're going to be giving some sort of an incentive that's coming out of the tax money in the city, I, I think we need to make sure we do it correctly. I don't know, you know, if this is something that has to be voted on tonight or we can make motions to table this. I think there should be some discussion on this further, and I, I think that's what we should be looking towards. I don't feel comfortable with this sitting here right now the way it is.
Sure. Ms. Barton, Council Walsh, your family definitely has, has been on the waterfront since I can, can remember. But we're not asking you to vote on this project. That's, that's, pardon the pun, but that ship has sailed. We are asking you to vote on a tax incentive so that they can get financing for the project. If the council doesn't vote for a financial, financial incentive, this project won't get financed, and, and I'm telling you, we'll be sitting here 10 years from now looking at that same vacant parking lot.
Right, I don't, just, just to follow up, I mean, it's prime real estate on the water. We don't make anymore. It's waterfront property. I mean, I don't think somebody else comes down the line if this particular group doesn't.
There is a reason, Counselor, that nobody else has done this, this, this project. There's a reason it sat there for 30 years, contaminated land, a host of issues. I could, I could seriously talk an hour about the hurdles that had to be crossed. But when is the last time $80 million was invested in the city of Lynn? You, you talk about prime real estate, yes. When was the last time somebody invested $80 million in Lynn? And not in my lifetime. And we have them sitting there waiting to get this thing done. And it's exactly what the council wanted.
Mr. President, Barton.
Mr. President, I think we'd be making a mistake if we tabled this, so I'm going to make a motion to approve.
Seconded.
Motion's been made, seconded, discussion.
Discussion, thank you, Mr. President.
I have more of a, Mr. Caudell, more of a process or a theoretical question.
Sure.
When you go into discussions with developers and the like on the issue of TIFs, what do you envision or how do you approach those by a need-by-need basis? I know you've had a history. We've done Rossetti's, right?
Yep.
D'Amici's. Of course, Council Cahill referred to the Market Basket one, one of the largest ones. Kettle Cuisine's been mentioned. Pie and Pine, I think we did a small one on. So what is your overall philosophy when you go in and meet? And how are you, are you looking, I'm sure rhetorically speaking, trying to put my negotiator hat on, you're trying to get the best deal for the city but also work with the developers? Is that right?
Yeah, so Counsel, you're correct that every deal is different. But I can tell you, I've been here for 30 years, right? We've probably done seven TIFs in 30 years. So it's not a tool that we do real, you know, frequently. We don't do that many. I can name them off the top of my head, and you just named most of them. But it's generally used to get the project done. Counsel Cahill is absolutely correct. Market Basket would not have invested if that wasn't on the deal.
How much was that project, by the way?
How much?
The Market Basket investment?
Total, $30 million.
So this is more than double.
This is $80 million. Market Basket, you, you gave them the TIF. Anywhere they go, they went to Revere, they go to TIF. Anywhere they go, they get a TIF. But in return, you get the jobs. We get 400 jobs in partnering with the city of Lynn. So every deal is different, to answer your question. This one here, and Counsel Walsh is correct regarding investment, and it's right on the water, and it's a beautiful view, to get this thing done, to get financed for $80 million, we had to put this on the table. I rely quite honestly on Mr. Karen and his expertise with the numbers and so forth. And so that's how it gets done. But it's a tool that we use very infrequently. And it's only used when it gets the deal done. Without it, it doesn't happen.
And, and that's how you got to this point, I imagine, bringing it before us. And, and the way you structured this one is different than previous TIFs. I guess the first three years, they are paying the full taxation on the property?
Yeah, that's correct. So during construction, as, as the construction is being built, they're paying 100% taxes. Then once it is built, which is, you know, year three, then the TIF kicks in.
And that's for seven years.
That's correct. It's a very, it's the shortest TIF that the city has passed in the 30 years I've been around.
Thank you.
Council Walsh.
Jim, thank you. So they're going to pay 100% on what is built, correct? Not the total project in the first couple of years?
That's correct.
So, so if they only build a foundation in the first year, we're only going to tax them, it's not the whole building, $80 million project, right?
Right. That's correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure. I, I, I'll just say, I can't support this right now the way it is, and I, and I respect everyone's position on it. I can't honestly ask people in the city to pay trash fees. I just can't. I can't do that and then give money away to a pretty, pretty substantial piece of property and pretty, you know, my eyes, wealthy group of people that are probably developing it, and, and ask people here who are just barely scraping by to pay for trash. So I just want to say that I can't support this right now the way it is.
Council Cahill.
Thank you, Mr. President. And just to be clear on some of the terminology, so TIFs were created historically for commercial. Because that program was so successful and there was such a need for housing, the state, under recent legislation, decided to kind of change the program a little and expand the H-TIF program to allow for these types of developments, which are residential. So it's not, it's not like a TIF. It does in the sense that is a, it's a, it's a reduction in the tax obligation on what you have built, but it's, it's not the same program. And I would just add, I agree with, with Counsel Walsh in that we're hypothetically, if we're asking people to do a trash fee, the only way to make sure that there's not a perpetual trash fee or imperperatorily is for these developments because once this money comes in, you can start eliminating some of those fees. Neals tax, you're talking about the trash fees, any other type of fees that we have, reduction in residential tax rates. The only way you can do that is through new growth. And this is an opportunity to do that.
Council Trahant.
Thank you. Yeah, I just wanted to go a little bit farther with Counsel Cahill. This is actually going to be a, this is going to release the burden on the residential taxpayers also. That's what we're all looking to do here. I've been here 18 years now. This is our biggest, biggest project. I can, I totally agree with Mr. Caudell. I had a couple of questions going forward. Now, with, I know you mentioned Mr. O'Donnell and the project across the street, the Gare Plant. plant. Are we talking a TIF with those people or are we going forward, gonna just stop doing this?
So this one here is critical for a whole bunch of reasons. Number one, it shows that the Linway is much more than fast food and car dealerships. It shows that an $80 million investment can happen on our waterfront. That's why the financing is hard for this, because there's no other development like this on the Linway. So I, I think you ask a valid question. I would be much more hesitant and reluctant because I don't think it will be as necessary as this to make the deal happen, because whoever comes number two will be able to point to number one and, and show it as a success. So I, that's why it's only a seven-year TIF. I, I don't think that the future projects would, would necessarily need, need one. This one does unfortunately.
Now, do you think we're gonna have a problem with the people when they find out we gave it to one and then not, not to them? Are they gonna walk away from, you think, from these deals or you think that they're...
No, I, I, because this one, if it happens, it will show banks that, that it can happen on Lynn and the doors will be open for lending.
Okay, yeah, 'cause by, you know, I just want to, I think what the council's trying to do is just kind of send you a message that going forward, I think we're all, this is, it is last minute, as Counselor Capano said, I totally agree. We kind of got this, kind of putting the cop before the horse here, but I think going forward, we need, as we saw tonight with the budget and this trash fee that we don't want to implement, that we don't need to do, that people are paying enough taxes, but this project is, and we all know it, it's gonna get this city moving in the right direction. And that Linway's just waiting to be developed and we've got a lot of people coming into town now, looking at it and talking to us about it, so. You know, like I say, I've been here a long time and I just, I think it's a good thing just from experience, if nothing else, I think we should all get behind it. I know a couple of you are hesitant, some of our newer councilors, but I think you're gonna find out down the road, when you're a counselor, 18, you know, 20 years from now, you're gonna, you're gonna wish you voted for this if you vote, vote against it tonight. This is gonna be a good thing. I want you guys to, you know, I'd like to really get behind it for me.
Mr. Chairman, may I just say one last thing? To Counsel Walsh and Counsel Capano, who, who I have great respect for, I understand what they're saying. I, I would just say this, that the way to lessen tax burdens, burdens on the homeowners in our city and in their wards is to, by increasing our taxes. And, and this brings in over 30 years, $46 million.
Counsel Lozzi.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for all my colleagues, their comments and input on this. I've been a counselor for 14 years and we've been waiting for something like this to come along in that, in my tenure and even before that. And I'm very excited to hear that we, we're finally getting, where, Jim, you said that possibly late winter, early spring breaking ground. That's, that is so exciting. And I think furthermore, to elaborate on Counsel Trahan, I hope we can vote on additional TIFs and greater amounts, because they would be commensurate with whatever that project is. So if we have a $100 million project at O'Donnell, I hope we can give a bigger TIF to them. And these are our common practices that really, I don't think they have anything to do with Chapter 91 or really whether they get a TIF or not has nothing to do with Chapter 91. I understand the question being asked, can this project be done without a TIF? Maybe, but do we want to take that risk? I've been waiting 14 years as a counselor. I don't want to take that risk. I want the $46 million over the next 30 years and to see and to show the world that Lynn is getting started with developing its waterfront with a big project like this. So I, I, I'm totally in favor of this and I'm glad to hear all this debate and input and I hope everybody's questions are gonna be answered, and I'm sure they will. Thank you, Mr. President.
Counsel Jukas.
Yes, Mr. Caudell.
Yes.
Thank you. This is a great project. Everyone is looking forward to this. I know you guys have been working so long on the Linway. We, everyone is looking forward to this. I think the main concern is, and I feel bad it just happened to be you coming up here tonight with this, is we're getting some of this paperwork last minute, right, guys? No one's really looked it over. I don't want to start their financing, but I think we just need as a group to get paperwork like this to us a little sooner so we can look it over and find out what's going on so we're not last minute. Nobody wants to stop their financing to go through tonight. But I feel as if, as a counselor, and I'm not sure if anyone else, we need some of this a little sooner so we're not sitting here having this debate in front of them as they're thinking they're coming over, we're all set, so. Something to look at.
Counsel Walsh.
Thank you. I mean, so I just want to elaborate. I respect everybody here, Billy, I think you know that and, you know, Lozzi, I think you know I respect your positions and your time being here. You know, I, I just wanted to say, when I talk about Chapter 91 and bringing it up in this, okay? And the reason behind this is I look at this money, $5 million over 30 years, okay? That's city money, okay? That's taxpayer money. I get, you know, maybe we didn't have it yet, I, I get that. But, you know, we're asking people and we're making a decision on that and we want to give that break or if we want to give that break. I think the community should have some more input into the process here. I just believe that community, you know, the boardwalk sounds like a great idea. I'm sure the people that'll move in there and pay 2,200 bucks a month are gonna love it. I, I just know Seaport. We talked about closing your eyes, Mr. Caudell. I see Seaport, okay? And I see a place that they built, much, much like Counselor Capano said, there's no access to it. We're going down that road again. I can see it, there isn't any parking spaces, are very few provided by this, by this project. So when we talk about why is Chapter 91 involved in this or why I bring that up, it's because it's our money as taxpayers, okay? And Chapter 91 is there to preserve the right of those people. So I think we're putting the cop before the horse, rushing this vote tonight until there's more discussion about what the people in the city will get out of a project and how it's connected to their waterfront. So, and I respect you, Mr. Caudell, I, I just, I, again, I can't support this. We're asking people to pay trash fees. It's just, it's not this time. I mean, maybe a few years ago when, when our situation was a little better, we don't have a budget yet, you know, we should be looking at how this is really gonna factor into that. So just like to say that, thank you.
Any other discussion? Counsel Capano.
Yeah, just a, a question. What would happen if, if we, I'm not necessarily against this, you know, I, I just, I don't like getting it at the last minute. I understand TIFs and the housing TIFs is what they call these now, you know, I, I mean, I don't think we should be giving them out, but I understand for years, even with TIFs, no one wanted to come to Lynn, kid, no matter what you did, you know? So I understand the reasoning, you know, but, you know, so, you know, so part of me is thinking, you know, if, if we did this, we, down the road, we would have, you know, some leverage, you know, because, you know, and a lot of cities and towns, when they give a TIF, there's something comes with it. You're get, you're getting a guarantee for local jobs, you know, there's always something with it, you know? Here, we, we just want people to come here because nobody's investing here. So, so I understand the reasoning for doing it this way. It's not something that I hope happens. I'd like to see us be able to get some, some kind of leverage, you know, when we use a TIF, you know, other than have people come here and, and move here and rely on just the tax base. I, I mean, I remember, you know, with the Sasaki Plan years ago, I mean, the, the original vision was condominiums, which would have been a lot of tax money, you know, and the market changed and I, I know, you know, apartments is, you know, what people are doing now. So, you know, what would, my question is, what would happen if we had some time just to look at this and, you know, ask some questions and, you know, and, and call around and, I mean, if we waited, we waited two weeks? What, what would happen?
I don't, I mean, you could ask the, the owners of the property. I, I just know that in speaking to them, that if this doesn't, I, I don't want the council to think that they're voting on the project. That's not what you're voting on. You're not voting on public access, you're voting on a, a tax agreement. I just know that if you ask the question, will you get financing without this, I know the answer, and the answer's no. And, and that's what, that's what this vote is all about, getting this project that we have worked on, Counsel, you and I, for a long time. It's at the finish line. This is the last step. I am never coming back before this body on this project again. I just, I just know I'm not, 'cause this is, we're at the finish line.
Well, see.
Yeah. That's true.
Counsel Lozzi.
Briefly, Counsel Capano referenced the community benefits agreement or something to that effect, when you exchange a good for a TIF, let's say. Have there any, have there been any discussions on the city's behalf with the developers in reference to that?
No.
Unwillingness or discussion?
No, I, I'm not familiar with that. I, I know that when, when, when you do a TIF or an H-TIP in return for, when you're talking residential, you're getting market rate housing and that's the, that's the exchange. You're getting market rate housing 100% in exchange for the tax incentive.
So there really isn't any guarantee of local jobs or anything?
Yeah, if you want to. This is Eric Loth, he's one of the principals.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you to the council for considering the matter. And I just did want to speak to the community benefits and Jim and the entire city has been wonderful to us, from the mayor to Mr. Cahill to everybody all the way down, so we really appreciate it, because we've gone towards projects in, it was mentioned in Revere, Newburyport, all different places. And I have to say, I think the best reception we've had has been in Lynn. And obviously, our, our partners have been in Lynn for 40 years with the Clock Tower Business Center and so forth. But as far as community benefits, as part of the Chapter 91 process, there was legislation passed, I think it was in 2003, by the previous owners. Part of that is the Division of Capital Asset Management and DCR owned a conservation easement across the front of the parcel. So what we've done is ask if we could change that a little bit so we can fit our buildings in there. But what we actually end up doing, they had, I think it's 42,000 square foot easement across the front of the parcel, along the waterfront. We're actually giving them 57,000 square feet back. So part of what we're doing now, what's taking so long with the bureaucracy, is going through DCR, DCAM and DEP all at the same time, and they all have their inputs, but we need to make sure there's no net loss to the state. We need to give them more than they're giving us. So we are building this boardwalk and it, a boardwalk doesn't sound like much, it's actually a 3.3 acre linear park, there's benches, there's access to the water and so forth. There are 11 parking spots, doesn't sound like a lot. We looked at doing more, but with the parking at the Ferry and then the parking Heritage State Park, that was what we came up with, that was what we could fit. And the other piece of the puzzle that we haven't mentioned, when we bought this parcel a year ago, and we bought it because we believed in the project, because everybody had been looking to us, it came with a piece of land on Exchange Street. It's about 10,000 square feet. It's used for the farmer's market and other things, right next to the little piece that the museum has. So as part of this and our part of our Chapter 91 agreement, we're also giving that to the city and we're building a park. It's gonna connect to the other park and put the, you know, the wrought iron fence around it. That's another, I think it's $750,000 or $1 million that we're also expending. So that's another, if you want to look at the, some of the community benefits. But, you know, Mr. Caudell was quite right that from the beginning of the project, all the way through as we're permitting, we're always working, not only with the banks, but with our investors, to come up with a return that they'll look at. And the reason why we've looked at this seven-year TIF, banks typically, when we're building a big project, we look at what's called a mini perm, so you're, you're constructing the building and then you're trying to get it up and operate, you're trying to take a couple of years to lease it up. That's usually, they give you a seven-year loan. So we said, gee, if we could, if we could have seven years of some help, just to kind of get the bank over the, over the hump, because we're showing them returns and it's just not getting there. They want to give you a 1.2% debt service coverage ratio. So if you had, you know, you spend 30 grand a year or something like that, they want to make sure you make 1.2 times that, right? It's, it's just their level of safety coverage. And with us, the hard problem with this project, despite the fact of how much we believe in it, there haven't been any projects built here yet in Lynn. Like Mr. Caudell said, the next one, I think it's gonna be a lot easier, because right now, when we go to the bank, they say, how much are you gonna get for rents? And we say, well, we think we're gonna get X, but we can only point to the projects that have been built in Salem or in Revere or in Everett and Chelsea, but it's not Lynn. We, I mean, we're on the water, so that's the number one driver and you've got the MBTA, but it's still Lynn. So we say, we think we're gonna get $2 a square for a, for a unit, we think it's $2,000 for a unit, but we don't really know until we build it. So the next project that comes, the one after that, I think this'll really light up a whole bunch of development. I'm sorry it takes so much time, but I just wanted to let you know about some of the community benefits that are...
Thank you. Counsel Walsh.
I just wanted to ask that gentleman, I'm sorry, I didn't mean. So is, is tonight, like, critical? It's gotta happen tonight?
We're really at the point where we need to nail down our, our funding. We've been working with mostly local banks. We're still not gonna get, you know, a Bank of America or a Key Bank or something like that. You know, we're looking, Easter Bank, these type of guys. And we're at the point where it's, you know, we're really fish at cup eight. You know, we're, we're spending a ton of money on the permitting with the state and everything. We really need to, to bring it home.
So, I mean, so we still waiting on permitting from the state? I mean, it's not, shovels ain't going in tomorrow night after we go.
You know what? We're thinking that the state will give us all our permits sometime this fall, so then it's a question of, if winter's right around the corner, are we gonna start building, you know, getting into the ground right before winter starts? Because if it's 2014, we could have built. If it was 2015, we would have been in big trouble. So I'd love to get in late fall, but I just think it's more realistic that we start in the spring. To answer your question, thank you.
Counsel Trahan.
Uh, thank you, Counsel President. I'm just gonna speak one more time on this. I just, ladies and gentlemen, my colleagues, I, I, you got gentlemen back here that are gonna spend $80 million, they're sitting in our chambers tonight. We've been waiting for this, we've been dreaming about this. I want to see this before I leave. We've been working so hard on this. Counselor Caudell, I know Counsel Cahill, when he was Counsel President, worked hard. Counselor Capano and, I mean, you've spent hundreds of hours down here working on this. Let's not, you know, let's not embarrass ourselves. We've been waiting for it, we've been working hard for it, let's bring it home. Let's bring it home. Let's not screw up their financing. This is a great, great project. This is gonna start it going. Bill O'Donnell down at, by Building 19's coming in across the street, they're doing all the invento mi, you know, and environmental stuff. And let's just, let's, let's all stand together here, let's get behind this. I know Counsel Walsh is, he's got valid points. He's young, he's caring about the taxpayers and we all do and I, and I understand that. And I'm not trying to change his mind, because I want him to vote with his heart, but this is a great project, let's not lose it. Let's not be back to Lynn, Lynn City of, whatever. I don't, I don't want that. It's going, it's, I want it to be gone. So let's all get behind this, let's not talk about it anymore, let's just do a roll call and do the right thing, please.
Hey, Counsel Trahan. I know Counsel Button's gonna ask for the same thing, but, and I know Counsel Capano would like to speak. But if everyone may indulge me to say a few words, if it's all right if I speak from the podium. I've been involved off and on in the city for over 30 years, working in the mayor's office, on the city council. In all that time, I've heard about the blue line coming to Lynn, the Beacon Chevrolet site being developed, the Habaho site being developed. Been in hundreds and hundreds of different meetings with different people, developers coming into the city and heard all these grand ideas. I remember when Senator Kerry came here and brought a couple of hundred thousand dollars for a study back in the 90s for the blue line. There's no blue line. And I've seen millions of different discussions about all kinds of development in the city in these chambers, and none of that development's really ever taken place. We have the market basket and I gotta be honest with you, I feel the way that Jay and Peter do about, these are large corporations that are coming into the city, they have millions and millions of dollars and they're building these projects, and what does Lynn get from them? I'm gonna tell you what Lynn gets from them. Over 30 years, conservatively, we're gonna get over $47 million in taxes from this project. I know their partners have been involved with Westland Creamery, they've been involved with the Watch Towers, they've been involved in Lynn for a lot of years and they've contributed here and provided thousands of jobs over the years. Now what they're, they're talking about doing is actually getting us started to develop the Linway. And the Linway is the future of our city. It's where our future industry is gonna be with all the different building that's gonna take place down there. place down there. And I mean, we can delay it and delay it and delay it. And I just went through it with Marshall Middle School, with making sure that all the i's were dotted right and the t's were crossed and all of that stuff. But what it wound up doing was delaying the project by three months, which doesn't sound like a lot of time, but it actually is, especially in the crisis that we're in. As Counselor Cahill was just saying, the way for us to get ourselves out of these problems that we're having with the budget is to bring revenues into the city. These apartments are going to bring disposable income into the city. They're going to be market rate units. They're going to be people who are going to be shopping in the downtown area, who are going to be going down there to have dinner and go into the clubs, and they're going to be going to City Hall Auditorium. I think Counsel Trahan is right. I think Counsel Cahill and Barton are too. And I can really respect Counsel Capano. I know how passionate he is about the Linway and all the things that are down there. And I know how passionate Counsel Walsh is. His family has been involved down there for as long as I've known them. And I go way back with his dad, and his dad goes way back with mine. So I get all of that. But I think that it's imperative that we get this project started. And I think that we got to vote for it. Counsel Barton.
Call for the vote.
I just want to give Counsel Capano his opportunity, and then we'll go.
I understand the risk, you know, these guys are taking, you know, on the Linway. And I understand, you know, the need for the TIF done this way. I just hope in the future, you know, down the road, we get to a place where, I remember when in Salem, they built those hotels on Pickering Wharf, and it wasn't, you know, you know, we'll give you a TIF. It was, you know, if, if you hire these people in the Point Neighborhood to work at this hotel, we'll give you a TIF. I want to get to that point. The other, you know, and I understand we're not there yet, and this is going to help us get to that point. The other thing I want to say is, I mean, that land that's there is, you know, in my ward and half on Counsel Chakutis's ward. You know, we, we should have known about this. We should have known what was happening. It's not right. It's, you know, deserve that amount of respect for the amount of work we put into this thing. You know, so, you know, those are, those are the things that bother me. I understand, I could have gave the same speech, the same speech that you just gave, I'd probably given myself. You know, I want to say the same thing. And everyone here understands, and everyone running for office in the city understands that the, what we need is economic, economic development in this city to raise tax revenue. But, you know, there are certain things, whether it's access to the waterfront, you know, a certain openness about what's going on. So when people call you, or if you go through the drive-through in Dunkin' Donuts, you don't have somebody giving you coffee, telling you what's going on before you can read the paper. It's not how it's supposed to work. We put a lot of time into this stuff, and, you know, this is the kind of thing that, you know, I, I just don't like, you know? So I'm probably going to vote for this, but I want people to be aware that in the future, we got to think about what the citizens of Lynn are getting, are getting for this. I'm opposed to the trash fee also. I mean, there's no way that they're going to reduce trash fees once they're imposed, whether we do this or not. It, it's impossible. So, you know, this is a good way to go, but I just don't like the way this was done, you know? So, you know, I just wanted to get my final two cents out there before we vote on this.
It's duly noted, and I take full responsibility for not informing you sooner than Friday. I apologize.
The problem is, not just you, it happens a lot. It happens a lot where the ward counselor is the last person to know. And, and, you know, I'm not, I don't know, it's, it's like ready, fire, aim. I don't know who's at fault, you know? I don't know where the leadership comes from.
I take the responsibility.
But we have a lot we could add to, to what's going on here. There might have been ways we might have been able to make this better, believe it or not, if we were included in the process.
Right.
So going forward, I just hope that we're able to do that this way. We started out this way when it looked more like a dream than an actual happening, you know? And it gets closer and closer. The doors get shut a little bit more and more, and, you know, people start getting left out. First, the counselor, and then I'm, I don't want it to spread out to the people. So that's, that's just what I wanted to say.
Made your point. Thank you. Roll call.
Okay, I'm going to read the order. Order that her honor, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents relating to a tax incremental exemption agreement for the property located at 254-272 Linway and 282R Linway in a form satisfactory to the City of Lynn Solicitor's Office, the Chief Financial Officer, and the Director of the EDIC. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
No.
No.
They're all set.
Okay, the next item is a discussion regarding a mass development grant for a study regarding the hazardous waste cleanup of the property at 83 Willow Street, the former White's Laundry property.
Who's going to speak?
Pardon me?
Who's going to speak? Counsel?
Oh.
It's the Caudell.
Back again. Ms. Chairman, this is a grant that Mass Development is giving to us. White's Laundromat is severely contaminated. It has, the contamination has migrated off-site onto the Hawthorne Parking Lot, which is 37,000 square foot parking lot, right in the middle of the downtown. The City of Lynn recently, I think it was last December, became the official owners of this property, which allowed us to apply for a grant. So this, in order for us to receive the grant, it needs a vote of the city council. This will help, the last time, the woman who owned it prior from Marblehead, she did a Phase 2 environmental test, but that was in 2007. So they, we need to do more testing. This $100,000, I believe, is the amount, will be used to do an assessment, to get, to, to nail down exactly what the contamination is, which will then allow us to apply for a grant for the cleanup, which is going to be about $1 million. Won't be from city taxpayers. We'll get Brownfield, excuse me, Brownfield grant funds for that. So this, this is allowing us to receive that grant, and it needs a vote of the city council.
Anybody have any questions?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded, discussion. Roll call.
Okay, I'll read the order on this one as well. Order that her honor, the mayor is hereby authorized to execute all necessary documents relating to a mass development recoverable grant for the purpose of conducting an assessment of the removal of hazardous materials from the property at 83 Willow Street, the former White's Laundry property, in a form satisfactory to the city Solicitor's Office and Legal Counsel for Mass Development. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan? Absent. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Public hearings.
Okay, we have a petition of 180 Boston Street Development LLC for a signed permit at Popeyes Louisiana Kitchen, located at 180 Boston Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Mr. Attorney, please state your name and your address.
My name is James Moore. I'm a lawyer in Lynn, Massachusetts, with offices at 85 Exchange Street. I'm here tonight on behalf of these signs. I've never spoken in favor of signs before, so it's due for me. I want to give you a little summary for the special permit. We're requesting two signs. We're authorized one sign. It's a total of three. One sign on each side of the building and one sign on the front of the building. We're also requesting a special permit to allow the existing pylon sign to be resurfaced with the same advertising materials of Popeyes Louisiana Chicken.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor?
Calvin Anderson, 12 Concord Street. So I've been watching this corner for some time. There was a gas station there for years, and everybody agrees it was kind of an underutilized function for this space. So I'm speaking in favor of this because generally Popeyes is a major corporation. Everybody's familiar with how they look, how they do things. They've got a lot of people, spent a lot of money designing this. And as I saw the build-out going on, I noticed that they were keeping the pylon, sort of for a grandfather's clause, and I, I don't even mind that going up there. Now, this is where the global station was on the corner, and I want to speak about something, and maybe we won't have to speak about it again, because I just want everybody to remember it. In the seven, short 17 years I lived in town, there's been two incidents in this space which bear some memory, some remembering. One, I believe, was a domestic violence incident that ended up with a woman dying at the scene. And people maybe remember that there was a makeshift memorial going on with stuffed toys, et cetera, going up. And nobody wanted to take that down for years. They just got faded. And now the property's been sold, and I guess it's gone. The second was maybe eight or nine years ago. A man tried to commit suicide by dousing himself gasoline and setting himself on fire. And one of Lynn's finest, who is now a lieutenant, been promoted by Mayor Kennedy, deservedly so, with no thought for his own safety, I understand he wrestled this man to the ground, the classic way you help somebody who's on fire. And I just want to have everybody remember that this was Lieutenant Michael Kimick. And next time you see him or think about Lynn's finest, always remember this heroic act. So hopefully we always remember that at this site.
Thank you, Calvin. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Are you in opposition?
And it's on behalf of the guy that has the Taco Zolay, or what's the place called, the new taco place that they built? All right. Well, he said to me, please tell the council that the only thing that he would not like to see is another drive-through. And I promised him that I would carry that message. So the Popeyes itself, I think, is a wonderful idea, but I'm carrying the message of God for him. I was up there, and he said, please tell them.
Thank you, Jeff.
Okay.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? I mean, in opposition. Anyone else in opposition?
Aye.
Anyone else in opposition seeing none? That part of the hearing closed. Counsel Chakutis?
Motion to approve.
Motion made to approve, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Next public hearing.
Petition of Hugh Meehan for a signed permit at Pie and Pint, located at 23 Central Ave.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Hugh Meehan. It's at 23 Central Ave, the Flatiron Building. Currently under construction. There's 40 yet apartments going in there, which we hope to deliver within the next six weeks. About 25 of those have already been leased for, for September 1st. On the ground floor, we've got a restaurant and a coffee shop, Pie and Pint, and The Brew. It's going to have an outdoor patio. And basically, with the size of the building, it's 90, it's over 90 foot high. It's 75 feet wide. And if you know, if you're coming, if you're coming from this direction down, you can see the broadside of the building. And just with the size of the building, we'd just like to have the opportunity to put up somewhat larger signs than what the regular, you know, code states, so our regulations are.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing no one? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Chakutis?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You're all set.
Thank you very much, folks.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Kula Camarinos to replace an existing two-car garage with a three-car garage at 84 Molton Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address.
My name is Kula Camarinos, and I reside at 84 Molton Street in Lynn, Mass. And I'm the owner of the three, three-family home there. We are looking to, we've already demolished the old garage and looking to build a new three-car garage, one for each tenant, ourselves and the other two tenants.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That part of the hearing closed. Counselor Capano?
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
You got it.
Next public hearing.
Petition of Scott Finley, P&amp;P Realty Trust, at 26 Washington Street, to convert a single family to a two-family with the second unit in the basement.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Scott Finley. I own 26 Washington. I'm just making it from a single into a two-family.
Okay, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. Anyone in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? That part of the hearing is closed. Counsel Chakutis?
I say motion to approve. Mr. Finley's been working with the Inspection Services, and he should be all set with them as long as he follows their rules.
Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. You're all set, Mr. Finley. Next public hearing.
Petitions by Mobility to attach, maintain, and operate cell communication equipment on existing poles at Western Avenue Barrett Street, 16 Tremont Street and Market Street, 22 Tracy Ave and Wausau Street.
Anyone wishing to speak in favor? Please state your name and your address, sir.
Good evening. Thank you, sir. My name is James George, permitting manager. I live in Salem, Massachusetts, 158 Al Lafayette Street. I'm here on behalf of Mobility, the applicant, and on behalf of Sprint, who is the carrier that is looking to densify certain areas of Lynn. We originally came in with a group of applications for new poles in the City of Lynn. It was the will of the body that they did not like that idea, so we have become more traditional in our approach, doing it more traditionally and attaching to existing utility structures within the right-of-way space. I'd like to go over these one by one if I, if I could. The first, the first location is located in Ward 2, Mr. Trahan's, Mr. Trahan's Ward. It's at the intersection, there's an existing wood 35-foot utility pole with, I'm a little close to there, an existing wood utility pole with a Cobra Lite at the intersection of Tracy Avenue and Wausau Street. That is in the area of Volunteer Field and Lynn, Lynn English High School, right? It's as you go around and you, you back into those parking spaces areas. The intent of this installation is a three-foot small wireless tubular antenna on top of the existing wood pole with two small boxes on the pole and no ground space. It is almost the exact way that Verizon is doing it. Verizon is currently deployed on the other side of the park, on the other side of Volunteer Field that you approved several months ago. We're looking to do the exact same thing. The densification that we seek is, it is a high-traffic area that, with a lot of kids on, on their internet and on their phones, and we're looking to densify it on behalf of Sprint. So essentially, we are looking to simply place the three-foot antenna and the two boxes on the utility pole. We would have an agreement with National Grid. Prior to seeking the building permit, we would come in with the, with the agreement that we have with National Grid and obtain the building permit and build. Typically, the, the build would take less than a day, a bucket truck, and if the street needs to be closed, we would do that, and they would deploy the equipment. The equipment makes no noise. It pretty much, essentially, just propagates into the small dense area that is required to do, and that's the extent of the project on that pole.
Okay. Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone else seeing none? Anyone, that part of the hearing is closed. Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Anyone wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none? That part of the hearing is closed. We have three different locations for these poles.
Yes.
Each one has to be voted on separately. You don't have to give the, the whole thing.
Mr. President, I'd just like, like...
Hold on.
I'd like, I'd like to make a motion to take these as a whole and table them. This should probably be in front of the Utilities Committee first.
Second. Motion made, seconded, non-debatable. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
It's just a question. Is that another public hearing that is noticed, or do I simply go down there next?
You'll go in front of the, you'll call Terry. She'll set, set you up for going in front of the Utility Committee.
Very good. It was my understanding that's where I was supposed to go first, but there was some kind of an error, and I acknowledge that, and that's fine. So let's just do this right.
All right.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Public hearings to be set down.
Petition of Cristobal Garcia, Pastor of Iglesia de Deos, at 16 Union Street for a signed permit. Petition of Joyce Street LLC, located at 17 Joyce Street for a signed permit. Petition of Dollar Tree, located at 15 Joyce Street for a signed permit. Petition of National Grid for a grant of location to provide services at 176 Franklin Street, and set down the public hearing on the proposed FY18 City of Lynn budget.
It's the wish of the council?
Set them down.
All together. Set them down. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Committee reports. RFP Committee. Counsel Barton?
Unanimous vote of committee, motion to approve.
Second. Second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. Ordinance and rules. Counsel Lozey? Motion to approve one item. Second. Motion made, seconded. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Excuse me?
Set down for a public hearing. Counsel, Attorney Labana, do we have to do a roll call on that public hearing for the trash? All right, so, do I have a motion?
Okay, it'll be a motion to set down for a public hearing, amended the trash ordinance.
Second. Seconded.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Chakutis?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Trahan?
Yes.
Yes. Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Education and Environmental Affairs. I believe that's Counsel Lozey?
Yes. We, no votes were taken, motion except for the record.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Ways and Means, Counsel Trahanz?
Unanimous vote of the committee, Mr. President, motion to accept.
Okay.
I read them all at once?
Yeah, you can, is it all right if she reads them all at once? Yes, yes.
Okay. Transfer the sum of $2,012.79 from the account insurance losses to the account of the Lynn Police Department to fund repairs from auto accident reimbursed by auto insurance. Transfer the sum of $57,132 from the account of reserve to the account of life insurance to fund life insurance premiums through the end of FY17. Transfer the sum of $5,473 from the account of reserve to the account of city clerk to fund budget shortfall of $5,473 relative to census mailings not budgeted for. Transfer the sum of $3,100 from the account of reserve to the account of personnel to fund tuition reimbursement for 261 and 341-7 members per collective bargaining agreement. Transfer the sum of $811 from the account of reserve to the account of insurance premium to fund unanticipated workman's comp premium audit. Transfer the sum of $597 from the account of reserve to the account of treasurer payroll due to step raise for employee not budgeted. Transfer the sum of $250 from the account of clerk of council payroll to the account of clerk human rights commission payroll to align funding properly within accounts to meet payroll obligations. Transfer the sum of $4,259 from the account of reserve to the account of city clerk expense to fund budget shortfall relative to ads placed in local newspaper, which is required by law. And finally, order that the mayor be authorized to execute all necessary documents, agreements, applications, and contracts of securing a park grant in the amount of $580,000. $400,000 from the park grant and $180,000 from the community development block grant funds for the construction and design of improvements to the large Lynn Commons.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Utilities Committee, Counsel Capano?
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to accept.
Seconded. Motion made to accept, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Communications.
Mr. President, point of information, a couple of committees didn't get reported out, budget, licensing, and public property.
Ah, they're not on my agenda here, huh? You're right, you're right.
I have the Budget Committee report.
Okay, licensing.
Unanimous vote of the committee, motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Budget Committee.
Budget, unanimous vote of the committee, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Oh, that's a- Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Budget Committee.
Budget, unanimous vote of the committee, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Budget Committee.
Budget, unanimous vote of the committee, Mr. President, motion to approve.
Second. Oh, that's a- Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Public Properties, Counsel Net?
Mr. President, the committee voted unanimously to approve and make a motion to accept.
Okay, motion made, seconded, roll call.
Okay, we have three orders from the public property. Do you want me to read them while?
Gotta do all three of them separately?
Throughout.
You can read them all together. Then one vote.
Can read them all together? Okay, the first one is a motion to have the city solicitors office prepare and advertise a request for proposals for the sale of City of Lynn-owned land at Morton Hill Ave, parcel ID 106-413-013, with the following conditions and stipulations. The property shall be used for landscaping only. No vehicle shall be parked on said property. No buildings shall be erected on said property. The property cannot be combined with any other lot for the purpose of facilitating the construction of any buildings or additions. Failure to comply with any for said condition shall cause the real property and its title to revert back to the City of Lynn. The aforementioned restrictions and conditions shall be expressly, shall be forth in the quit plain deed.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas? Yes. Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear? Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes. Second order is, there is hereby established under the provisions of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 40(c), a local historical district study committee consisting of seven members, which shall make an investigation and report on the historical significance of the Grand Army of the Republic Building, and shall submit a final report with its recommendations after public hearing, together with a map of the G.A.R. building and a draft of the proposed ordinance to the City, Lynn City Council.
Motion made, seconded, roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill? Yes. Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, and Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
And the final one is, order that the City of Lynn accept and affirm that the way located in Lynn Essex County, Mass, commonly known as Essex Circle, being more specifically shown on that certain plan titled Plan of Land in Lynn, Massachusetts, Scale 1 = 30, drafted by Frank E. Gowdy, city engineer, dated February 24, 1948, and recorded with the Essex County Southern District Registry of Deeds as Plan Number 115 of 1948 in Book 3590, Page 1, The Plan, which Plan has been duly authorized by the mayor and the city council and filed with the city engineer pursuant to Section 12.08.10A of the Municipal Code of the City of Lynn, Massachusetts, is hereby laid out and accepted as a public municipal way by the city council in accordance with the Mass General Law, Chapter 82, Section 21-24, and Lynn, Massachusetts Municipal Code, Section 12.08.10.
Roll call.
Essex Circle. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear? Absent. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Did we get an emergency on that?
Yeah, motion, second.
Motion for emergency, second. Roll call.
Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Oh, yeah.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear? Absent. Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Communications.
Okay. Communications. Okay, we have appointments from the mayor. We'll just read them all together. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Mr. David Ellis to the Lynn Water and Soil Commission. Mr. Ellis's term is effective immediately and will expire on June 30, 2020. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Adi Bat to the Human Rights Commission. Her term is effective immediately and will expire on October 30, 13, 2020. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Joe Skeken to the Lynn Cultural Council. His term is effective immediately and will expire on December 31, 2020. Dear counselors, I am hereby appointing Aaron Lieber to the Public Arts Commission. His term is effective immediately and will expire on December 31, 2019. And dear counselors, I am appointing Mrs. Karen Nico Bunting to the Lynn Disability Commission. Her term is effective immediately and will expire on July 12, 2020. Sincerely, Mayor Judith Flanagan Kennedy.
Motion to approve.
Motion made, seconded. Roll call on all of them? You know, have to do one at a time, just-
Nope, okay. Counsel Barton?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Cahill?
Yep.
Yes, Counsel Capano?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Chakoudas?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Calucci?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Sear?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lapierre?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Lozey?
Abstain.
Abstain. Counsel Net?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Trahanz?
Yes.
Yes, Counsel Walsh?
Yes.
Yes.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
And any new business? Counselor Cahill?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just have a question. Um, a lot of talk about the budget tonight.
Talk about the what?
The budget. Just curious, when statutorily are we supposed to be presented with said budget, and when should we expect said budget?
Mr. Lamanna? Is it 185 days?
Okay, so we'll get the budget in the next seven days?
Yes.
Great.
Supposed to.
A lot of people are interested.
Any other business? Another quick one, huh, guys and ladies?
Adjourned. Motion to adjourn. Seconded.
Motion made, seconded, all those in favor?
Aye.
Counselor Capano?